Welcome, everyone. Appreciate you all coming out to tonight's town council meeting. I think this is going to be a very exciting meeting. As you see, we have extra mayor and extra council members and an extra attorney. The reason for that is part of a program that the Maryland Municipal League puts on. They put on what is called a Bainer Town, Bainer City recognition, as you see the Bainer there. Back in June of this year, at the MML convention in Ocean City, we were recognized as a Bainer Town. It was our first year, and we want to continue that. Some of the requirements that MML put upon the program is to attend certain chapter meetings, attend the MML convention every June, and the Fall Conference. And then there's a few other things, and one of them is what they call November Municipality Government Month. Last year, I went over to the eighth grade at New Windsor Middle School and talked to four different eighth grade classes about the history of New Windsor, a little bit about the government, and they had some questions for me that I answered. This year, I thought, let's do something a little different, and let's get the students involved. And with the assistance of their eighth grade social studies teacher, Ms. Jennifer Moran, who is here this evening, will talk a little bit about how the students were selected. I thought that we would have them come and shadow us at a town council meeting. So I think it's going to be very interesting. There's been no practice to this, so enjoy the evening, and I will have Ms. Moran stand up and please, if you'd like to come over to the microphone, and just explain how the students were selected. And first, I want to thank you on behalf of the council, myself, for you cooperating with this and your support.
You're very welcome. It was definitely an honor to have you come into my classes last year and speak with the kids, and I think they learned an awful lot about what it's like to be a mayor, everything from, I think they asked you, how much do you get paid and how old you are to what you actually do. So they learned some government as well. This year, when the mayor and the town of New Windsor approached me about having the kids come to the meeting this afternoon, I decided to do sort of an application process with them. And I had all of my eighth graders fill out the application, which had a bunch of different questions on it, anything ranging from, you know, what sort of activities do you participate in personally that might give you some sort of civic awareness or community awareness, to what needs do you see in your community, how do you wish those needs would be addressed, to leadership skills that they personally possess. And then the students that turned in the best applications were taken to a committee that was composed of Mr. Brillhart, our principal, Ms. Fosnot, our assistant principal, and Ms. Heiner, our eighth grade guidance counselor. And they reviewed all of the applications, and we had about nineteen fully completed applications. And from those nineteen, we selected the top seven who are here with us this evening based upon a couple of different factors. One of the things we looked at were their grades to make sure that they academically sort of were keeping up with what they should be doing in school and putting their best effort into their school and their education. So that was an important factor. We took a look at the applications, obviously, and their answers to the questions, and, you know, kind of weighed and discussed what they thought about their community, how active they were in it, and what sort of stake they might have in the community, which is very important even as a teenager. And then we also looked at the students who lived in New Windsor versus students who lived in some of the surrounding communities that we pull from for the school. And these are the kids that we chose, and I'm very proud of them. They were, I think, a little nervous today. One of the big questions which you might find funny is, what are we supposed to wear? So that was, I think, but they're going to do a wonderful job, I think, this evening. So congratulations to you guys, and again, thank you so much for having our students in here. It's a real honor and a privilege for them to be here with you guys this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. It's a great partnership we have. With us tonight, we have Mayor Haley Sawyers. We also have shadowing Councilman Dave Huffman, Councilman Xavier, I'm sorry, Xavier Nolan, and shadowing Councilman Ed Pauls Grove. We have Councilwoman Molly Andrews. Shadowing Councilman Kevin Knoll, we have Councilman Preston Jones. Then we have Attorney Anna Kane, shadowing our attorney, Michelle Ostrander. Then, shadowing Councilwoman Kimberly Schultz, we have Councilwoman Megan Prentice. And, shadowing Councilman Ed Smith, we have Councilwoman Emma Hughes. Welcome, and thank you. Ready?
I don't know.
Bang it.
I call the November 2014 New Windsor Town Council meeting to order. Will everyone stand and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our meetings are recorded electronically and will follow an agenda. Anyone who wished to have a matter placed on the agenda needed to submit the topic to the mayor in writing by the last Wednesday of the month, by the close of the business day, which is 3:00 p.m. These items will be reviewed for approval. Anyone wishing to speak during residents' concerns should sign their name on the signup sheet, which is on the table by the town manager. Counsel, before you are the minutes from the October 1st, 2014, Town Council meeting, tab three. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Yep. Motion to accept minutes of Town Council meeting of October 1st, 2014.
Do I hear a second?
Just a second. Somebody down there.
Who's taking it?
There's a motion by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Prentice, to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes, and the minutes have been approved. Reports, council committees. Public Works, Councilwoman Nolan.
The last yard waste pickup for the year is scheduled for November 18th. Curbside leaf pickup will continue through December 4th. Check the town newsletter for the pickup schedule. Please do not rake your leaves into the gutter when implement weather is forecasted. Speaking of implement weather, I have the unwelcome task of mentioning the S-word, snow. As we start preparing for the winter weather, please remember to move your parked vehicles out of the roadway during snow events so the town's maintenance crew can clear the street property. Finally, the town has received the roadway paving assessment report. This report will be discussed under new business.
Any comments or questions for Councilman Nolan? Are the public works employees and equipment ready for snow?
Yes, they are checked, and all the equipment is ready.
Water and sewer, Councilwoman Andrews.
We would like to provide a quick review of New Windsor's water quality. Our water system is regulated by the EPA Environmental Protection Agency and MDE, Maryland Department of the Environment. Through the implementation of the SDWA Safe Drinking Water Act, the town's water system is operated and tested by MES, Maryland Environmental Service. New Windsor's water supply currently comes from a combination of spring and well in the Denny's Road and Bowersocks Road area, about four miles from town, and two wells on Hillside Drive here in town. Periodically, these sources are tested for contaminants, and a report is presented to the town. We have always been fortunate that our water, when tested, is well within the acceptable levels of each contaminants as nitrate, copper, lead, radium, and several other potentially harmful components. We have a copy of the full report with us this evening. It is also available on the town website.
Any comments or questions for Councilwoman Andrews? How's the town's water supply?
I'm so glad you asked that question. New Windsor is fortunate to have several abundant sources of water availability for present and future needs. In addition to the source mentioned earlier, we also have an undeveloped well and another spring at our disposal that would be possible to tap into when needed for additional water This in contrast to other parts of the country and world where drought and over pumping are equally becoming a reality. If any of you saw the 60-minute segment on TV last evening, you saw such a situation in California's Central Valley where, incidentally, much of the produce that we consume comes from. In the worldview, India and China are experiencing similar situations where the demand for food and water to grow, it is depleting the availability of groundwater. We share this as a reminder of the importance for us to not only maintain and preserve our current and future water sources, but also to conserve and practice good stewardship in our using consumption of the most precious resource. So, Ms. Mayor, our water supply is most adequate.
Public Safety, Councilman Jones.
Planning Commission met and reviewed county's master plan. Plan has been out for the 60-day review period. I defer to Corporal Townsend for the deputy report.
Do you see the deputy program continuing with the new sheriff?
Yes. While the New Windsor's deputy program is the only one in the county, it's been a very successful program, and we see it as a win-win for both the town and the sheriff's department.
Economic Development, Councilwoman Prentice.
What, too bad, wasn't it?
Councilwoman Schultz recently attended the Carroll County Economic Development meeting. She received information about the American Express program, Small Business Saturday, which is on November 18th. She will possess more information after the break.
I feel like this was too much to ask Councilwoman Schultz and Councilwoman Prentice to talk about. And I just want to say how nice it is to have other councilwomen on the council. There's a program that American Express does called Small Business Saturday, and it's the day after Black Friday, and it's November 29th. And I sent away for some information, and I'm going to make this flyer available to the council and the public so they can see some of the materials that we got. But I'll be going out this week and distributing the materials to all the small businesses in town. They get a little crazy with the bags, and so we have a lot of extra bags, so I'm going to have Councilwoman Prentice distribute these later on. I'm going to give one to all the council people who are here tonight and to members of the audience if they want some. So, that's that report.
Any comments or questions for Councilwoman Prentice? How is the town staying involved with the Brethren Service Center and the possible sale of the property?
The mayor is staying in touch with the center, with the Brethren Service Center, and also with potential developers, keeps the council informed about that process. And as soon as we have news to share with the community, we'll do that.
Community Enhancement, Councilwoman Hughes.
The animal Christmas tree lighting will take place on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. at the gazebo located on the corner of Main Street, Route 31 and Green Valley Road. This will be followed by the monthly Town Council meeting in this room. We encourage everybody to join us at the tree, then to come to the meeting where light refreshments will be available. This year, we have extended an invitation to the chorus at New Windsor Middle School to provide musical entertainment at the tree, as well as prior to the meeting. Ms. Julia Wolf, the musical director at the school, has accepted this invitation and is in the process of selecting the music and obtaining the proper parental permission slips.
Any comments or questions for Councilwoman Hughes? Do you need any help setting up for the Christmas tree lighting?
As far as help, I would ask if the public works employees can have the tree up and decorated for this. I would also like to extend a formal invitation to Santa Claus to join us for this event. One additional thing, I would like to say that the council member that I shadowed this evening, Councilmember Ed Smith, is doing a fine job on the council. I was almost surprised that I was old enough to vote.
Thank you very much. I'm actually surprised, thank you.
Mayor's Report. The past month has been a very busy and productive period, especially with the State Highway Administration Community Meeting for the Safety and Enhancement Project and the Community Meeting for the Dealment in Feasibility Study. Both of these meetings were all, were well-attended. These meetings can be viewed on the Internet by going to the newwindsormd.org, carolmediacenter.org, or youtube.com. I also did a five-minute segment for Comcast talking about these two projects and can be seen on YouTube. I attended a strategic business unit meeting with Chesapeake Employers Insurance, a Carroll County Code Task Force meeting, the Tony Town Business Breakfast, attended the Carroll Media Center's Valley Awards, where the town received an award which will be discussed under new business. I met with Roy A. Libdan, Director of Operations for the Partnership for Healthier Carroll County earlier today. I will be attending a Toma Tacoma.
Tacoma.
Tacoma Park Workshop tomorrow, evening, to focus on state support for historic preservation and renovation, and learn about historic preservation tax credit opportunities. I've been working with Senator Getty and Delegate Krebs in obtaining additional grant funding regarding our loan with the Maryland Department of Environment for the new wastewater treatment facility. Frank and I met with Lieutenant Governor-elect Boyd Rutherford along with Senator Getty and Delegate Reddy discussing the financial hardships, the new wastewater treatment facility created. Any questions for me about the mayor's report?
Good.
Community Deputy Corporal Mark Townsend.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. Carroll County Sheriff's Office handled 112 incidents for the month of October. Following is a brief summary of those more significant events. On October 10th, around 4:20 p.m., I responded to a three-vehicle collision at the intersection of Church and Main Street. There was three people that were transported with non-lethal injuries. Failed to yield right away was the cause of that accident. And when October 28th, around 5:00 p.m., between, I'm sorry, between October 28th and 5:00 p.m. and October 30th at 11:00 a.m., New Windsor Brethren Center experienced some destruction of property in front of the main building. There were three cast iron law ornaments valued over $500 total combined. They were broken up by an unknown person, were still under investigation up there. It was possible that someone was in the metal collecting because of the way things were laid out. We don't know for sure. It's a well-lit area, it's right out front there facing Main Street, so no one has any information. If anyone does, of course, please call our office. On October 28th, around 10:19 p.m., deputies responded to the 100 block of Church Street, to be specific, above the Belissimo's Pizza, for an unknown trouble call above that business. There are some apartments up there. The newer deputies were on the scene for quite a long time before we could determine that everything was okay there due to subjects not answering the phone. Everything was okay again. Okay, vehicle stops, there were issued 36 warnings and citations for the month. Okay, it's around that time of the year, again, I just want to remind everybody, you know, with the holidays and everything, please, you know, when you go shopping, put your valuables out of sight in the vehicles, you know, park in well-lit areas, and be aware of your surroundings. And also, be careful about fraud, as we all know by reading papers and by my reports. We have had a lot of incidents of fraud. You know, a lot of people try to get us in these times of the years, victims, by using this false information, and we don't, you know, if you have any questions, please call our office or even call the state's attorney. If you don't know the person, just don't provide any information or inform us. Also, if you're going to be out of town, please call our office. We will do house checks of your residents. Just let us know, you know, who's going to be home, if anybody, any vehicles have thrown away, into that nature. We definitely would encourage that. I just want to thank Sheriff Kenneth Trigoni publicly for all his years of service to Carroll County citizens. He is going to be retiring soon. He's been a wonderful mentor. He's brought our agency up from just when I started here in 1999, just to serve in papers, to a full-service agency. He's provided excellent leadership for our deputies and made it a more professional organization. I just want to thank him for also giving me a chance in this job and providing me in this position to serve the town's citizens. Sheriff, I salute you publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, but I want to follow up on your comment, Mark. Oh, yeah, I also want to thank the sheriff. I mean, he was instrumental in us starting this program and selected you to be with us. And, you know, you gave the incidents tonight of 112. When we started the program, we were routinely averaging 260 incidents a month. And as to the strong efforts of the sheriff's department and the sheriff and your job, the work that you do, that has, you know, most of the problems we have now are called nuisance, for the most part. And we have a good handle on vandalism and anything major, and I want to thank the sheriff again for all the support he's given us.
Thank you, Mark.
West Carroll Rec Council, Laura Jones.
See, I come to these meetings now. The outdoor sports are finished up now as of last weekend, and indoor sports are starting, so basketball, practice, cheer, inside. I really don't have anything else to report at this time, other than the new board for the rec council will be starting in January, and to date, we have no one who has signed up to be the town liaison for the rec council. So, as more come, you know, more information comes through on that, I'll be sure to let you know.
How the football team make out?
Well, half of them are here. They made it to the playoffs this season, and after the first game, they were out. But they did very well.
Good.
Any questions or comments for council?
Rec council.
Rec council, Laura Jones.
Thanks.
Fire Chief, Chief Tom Cow.
October was a pretty eventful month for us. We wrapped up a pretty busy season of school and daycare visits at the firehouse during a fire prevention month, and I think we enjoy those visits as much as our guests do. The month of October, we ran 16 calls for fire rescue service for a year-to-date total of 209, and 41 calls for emergency medical service, which bring us to a year-to-date total of 403. Lot of events going on coming up towards the holidays. We have an apple dumpling sale, our auxiliary's doing an apple dumpling sale. Orders are due by November the 20th. You can order those apple dumplings at $3 apiece by calling 410-775-7402. Pickup for those apple dumplings would be December 5th at the station. We continue our weekly bingos on Tuesday, and we will be having our monthly breakfast on Sunday, December 7th, from 7:00 to 11:00. And from what I'm told, Santa Claus is going to come directly from your tree lane over to our breakfast. So Santa will be there to visit with the guests. Some of you might have seen a large column of smoke on the southwest quarter of town, down in the area of Coe Drive this past weekend. The fire department was supporting a family whose house was ravaged by fire in this previous January, finally bringing the structure down that was unsafe to inhabit. So that was a controlled evolution that was done safely and effectively. If you saw the smoke, and I was curious what its cause was. As the weather starts to chill, we just want to remind everyone to have their chimneys inspected, serviced, and cleaned prior to using any indoor fuel-burning stove or furnace. It's always a hazard this time of year, and we always want you to have your chimneys cleaned, inspected, and serviced. Lot of talk about snow this evening, and from what they say in the forecast, it's coming. We had one of our younger members bring an issue to my attention and was curious what we could do about it, and he was very eager to do all of the research himself and come up with a proposal. Anthony Vetri, who's a member, an active member at our fire department, lives in Blue Ridge Manor, felt that we might need to do something. So, when it snows greater than 12 inches deep in town, the volunteers hop on the fire engine and go shovel the 87 fire hydrants we have in town out, so the fire department can see them and access them. You might say that our fire hydrants are much taller than 12 inches. The problem is, is they're so close to the road, as snow piles up from snowplows, they're quickly buried. And I'm sure, as Councilman Knoll notices, those ones on the hill, on the portion of High Street there, across from the Pit Beef Restaurant, are impossible to find the way the snow banks up on them. So Anthony, last year, when he was out helping to shovel up the fire hydrants, he's like, you know, it'd really help if we had fire hydrant markers. So there are relatively inexpensive additions that could save us critical minutes if there's an emergency in town. These 60-inch hydrant markers attach to the two-and-a-half-inch connection on the side of the fire hydrants. And a cost estimate for installation, shipping, and delivery would be $1,845 to outfit the entire town. The fire department would be willing to supply the manpower to install them, and there's nothing needed to be done to manipulate the fire hydrants. They attach onto the connections. They come from a company called Emergency Response Products, and again, that would, a total request for that would be $1,845. Just wanted to submit that to the town for their consideration, and I have any supporting documentation you folks might be interested in.
New business?
We'll handle that under new business. We'll handle that under new business.
Sounds good, thank you.
Santa Claus?
Oh, yeah. I didn't have the picture, remind me. So our favorite time of year is coming up upon us. Santa Claus will be visiting the greater New Windsor neighborhood, starting Wednesday, December 10th. We'll be hitting Glenview Acres, Overbrook Drive, and Smiley Drive. Friday, December 12th, we'll be in Atlee Ridge, the Hollowell Drive area, Clear Ridge Road and Union Town, and for our town residents. Wednesday, December 17th, we'll be doing the Town of New Windsor, Blue Ridge Manor, and Springdale Village. If it snows or rains on any of those nights, we'll be out on Friday, December 19th, to make up all of those places. The units will leave the fire station at 6:30, distributing good holiday cheer and some candy candies. So we look forward to that.
Tom, could you have someone get that to me so I can put it on the website?
Sure can. That completes my report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Town Manager, Mr. Frank Schaper, tab 5.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, if you're tuned in. Tab 5, final report. Some of my report will be abbreviated tonight, since it'll be covered later in new business with the new council members. Waterline base mapping project, as I reported last month, we had the difficulty using the old mapping to actually tie down the location, so right now, we're in the process of getting proposals for a utility locator to come in and help us do that work. Lagoon decommissioning. I talked to you last month how we kind of got I talked to you last month how we kind of got spun in a circle with Maryland Department of the Environment, due to the number of different groups in MBE which were involved. There's land management, which handles the actual sludge disposal, water quality, which handles the discharge of the effluent, and enforcement, which controls the permits. But we've continued to have discussions with them, and at this point, it seems to be a willingness to consider some sort of discharge under our current wastewater treatment plant permit, which last month, they had basically turned us down flat on. So that, that's good news, because we don't want to have to truck that little off-site. We've been talking about our streetscape project, and behind my report, you'll find GMB's proposal for the scope of work for that project, and I'll just capsulize it. What they're suggesting is replacement of all the waterline, six-inch main and eight-inch main for the entire length of the project, with twelve-inch main, new service lines and vaults, and meters for each connection along the route, and the cost of that construction is estimated at one million dollars. For the sewer, they are recommending a lining the sewer with a cure-in-place process. That's where they pull a little, basically a little plastic tube through the middle. They inflate that against the outside, cure it with steam, and it becomes hard, and that seals up the pipe. Then you basically have a new lined pipe, but you don't have to dig it up to get to it. So that process with, with the addition of fixing up any of the manholes, is estimated to be about two-hundred thousand dollars. We add on another thirty-six thousand dollars for administrative and engineering costs, and we come up with a project cost of one-point-five-six million for our utility replacement on that project. It's a very early estimate. You might remember last month, we voted on the notice of intent at two million dollars, so we're, you know, we know that we have a little bit of breathing in there. Our pumping station replacement project, I'm not going to go into in depth, because it's going to be discussed further, but I do want to ask Attorney Kane for an update on the legal aspects of that.
We had a telephone conference with Brandy Burwell from USDA. She said everything was on schedule for us. She needed one thing from me, which has now been done, that is pretty much the end of the legal fees for this project unless some changes.
Thank you, Attorney Kane. We have our paving assessment report. I won't go into that, because we're going to cover that in depth a little bit later. Fueling in, you might recall last month, I reported that the insurance was about to lapse, because the new carrier could not be located, and in fact, that did happen. Our broker, Ballinger, is still looking for a carrier. We are ourselves, through the town, looking for a carrier. Interestingly, I contacted my counterparts in the other towns and got referred back to Ballinger, which is our broker's. We went in a circle on that. Stormwater management. I had a meeting this week with representatives of the county's stormwater management office in regard to the retrofit, the stormwater management pond in Blue Ridge, and you might remember, happy to forget, a year and a half worth of discussion to get into that agreement, where the county pays eighty percent of the cost and the town pays twenty. Well, now it's going to pay off for us, because we already paid for a small portion of this retrofit, which will be starting after the first of the year. We'll start with a cleaning out of the pond and getting all the sediment and trees out of it, and then there'll be an assessment of the condition of the facility, and then we'll go into design and construction, and we're looking at a two-to-three-year process to complete that requirement. That, if we complete that one project, that'll be about fifty percent of our mitigation requirement completed with one project. So for us to get that done at twenty percent of the cost is what we worked.
So it's about two-hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand dollar project?
Yeah. More, there'll be more than that.
Okay.
But we're just starting.
Right.
That's what we worked so hard for so long to get.
Great job of that, too.
Okay, the, the report from, GMB is behind mine. I would recommend you pull that out of your binders tonight and take that with you, so you can read up on that, because I will be taking that to the State Highway Administration, and I want you to be comfortable with what's in there before I, before I do that. Any questions on any of the projects or any?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Schaper? Treasurers' report, clerk treasurer, Ms. Donna Alban.
Holton.
Alban, tab six.
Good evening, everyone. For October, in our general fund, we had deposits of ninety-three thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and eighty-five cents, and expenses, including both payroll and accounts payable, of a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, leaving us a balance in the general fund of two-thousand, two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. On our enterprise side, we had deposits of a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven dollars and twenty-six cents, expenditures of twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and nine cents, leaving a balance of a hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, a hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Wouldn't that even, a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Then in our reserve fund, on the capital fund side, on the enterprise, we now have a balance of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And in our loan repayment fund, we have a balance of a hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and sixty-five cents. The money market contains forty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, and our lead-high fund remains unchanged at six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Now, we have completed the first quarter of our new budget, and I've looked over everything on that, and we are in good shape right now. Any questions? Thank you.
Residents concerned, are there any residents signed up to speak?
There are no residents signed up to speak.
Do any residents want to speak? Old business, does the council have any old business to discuss? New business?
All right, this is where I'll help a little bit. We, every November, we've been recognizing our local businesses for their years of service here. However, first, I want to recognize Sheriff Ken Trigoni, who has not only been sheriff of Carroll County, but served four years in the United States Marine Corps, thirty-one years with the Maryland State Police, sixteen years as the sheriff of Carroll County, which is a total of fifty-one years serving your country, your state, and your county. And if you would come up forward.
I'll be behind you.
No, we'll come out front.
And I'm going to echo Corporal Towson's comments and Councilman Noll's, that your support for the town of New Windsor to have the deputy program has been just unbelievable. There was one time where Corporal Towson became corporal, and there was an issue of him being able to stay here in New Windsor. You know, a simple phone call to you, and you made it happen, and you worked it out with the county budget management, and you were able to maintain his services here. And just to let you know that, you know, I probably speak for pretty much everybody that serves under you, but Corporal Towson has taken this job personal. If there's a crime committed, he takes it very personally, like, this is his town, which it is, and he does everything in his power to make sure that there's an end to the problem, and usually, there's an arrest with that. But all this would not be possible if you weren't where you were for the last fifteen years and supporting the deputy program. And as a small token of our appreciation, Sheriff Kenneth L. Trigoni, on behalf of the citizens of New Windsor, the mayor and town council proudly recognize your sixteen years of service and dedication as sheriff of Carroll County, Maryland, November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen.
A few words?
Yes. First of all, your community deputy program is a model for the country. It really is. And these new council persons tonight, you've witnessed local government that has found its grassroots government. And that young council person over there, who went to first school, would butter up the city council. All kidding aside, thank you very much, mayor and town council and citizens, for your support over these sixteen years. Very grateful to serve as your sheriff. You have a good man coming in, and he will take the department to another level. I'm very confident of that, before he has to deal with me. With this community deputy program, I talked to the new sheriff elect, and he'll have it this on the evening. And I want to compliment Mark for all the job, the good job he's done here, and the mayor for seeking the program. And we want to continue your service in New Windsor.
Thank you.
One of our local businesses, she was not able to be here tonight, is Viya Callier, for her fifteen years of service. You can see that she did that. And is Jeremy Haytop here? Okay. The mayor and council recognizes Earthwood Builders Incorporated for its thirty years of service, November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen.
My parents brought this business out of the basement of Earthwood, almost thirty years ago, and everybody's always appreciated the small town being real, appreciate their ambition.
And talk a little bit about Earthwood Builders, what they specialize in?
We build custom homes and renovations, and we don't do a whole lot of working there on hand. We specialize all over the place, and this is what we recognize, even though we may not be as useful as ours.
Well, we're glad you're part of the New Windsor family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone hear from One or Peace Assembly? Anybody yet? This is one of the organizations at the Brotherly Service Center. The mayor and town recognizes One or Peace Assembly Incorporated for its forty years of service, November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. You can see that they did that. Larry Wood, representing the Serve International. The mayor and council recognizes Serve International for its sixty-five years of service, November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen.
Serve appreciates the sixty-five years of service that we have provided nonprofit organizations around the world. We come from, we have about sixty different organizations around the world that we support, from Bangladesh, to Mali, to Peru. We employ about fifteen permanent people here in New Windsor, another ten in Madison, Wisconsin, and five permanent part-time people. But the big contribution that we make to this community comes every time, every year about this time. We hire about forty seasonal people, and most of those people come from this community.
And what can you do at the Serve gift shop? Do you have a gift shop?
We, we have a Serve gift shop. It's our outlet store, and it's open Tuesday through Saturday, from ten to five, and we have examples of all of the products that we sell. However, I have brought some catalogs with me this evening, so if anyone would like to see what, where's we provide, you're more than welcome to take the catalog.
Now, some of these crafts, gifts made from around the world?
They're, they're all, all of my gifts, they come from around the world, as well as products that fibers create. We have chocolate, which is our largest seller, and coffee. All of these things are fair trade organization. A little bit about fair trade, we, we work with an organization that provides guidelines for fair trade sales, and we have, we deal directly with farmers and artisans, so that there is a fair price paid for all of those products.
And a lot of the proceeds go back to villages and?
Yes. One of the most recent ones is a group called Get Products, which is in Nepal, and they have started, with, with proceeds that we have been able to provide to them, they've started a school for their children.
Very good. Lot of good work you do.
Thank you.
And I believe we have Mary Ann Grossnickel and Loretta Wolf. And Deb is not able to make it from Dylan yet. The mayor and council recognizes Brotherly Service Center for its seventy years of service, November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. Congratulations.
I'll put her here.
Okay, a few words?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this award. I wanted to bring Loretta Wolf, who's worked with the Brotherly Center for over thirty years, and I'm a rather new to the center. I work at the Brother hospitality center, and delighted to be there. So I wanted to represent the whole thing. Have a few words to say, I'm going to have to read part of it, but for many years, the name of New Windsor has traveled around the world because of the presence and the work of the Brotherly Service Center that is located in your beautiful town. Bales of quilts, medical supplies, and cell phone are shipped to areas of poverty, disaster sites, as well as fair trade artisan items shipped in boxes to New Windsor, again, to fight poverty. But they all carry the name New Windsor. It is the name of a town well-known around the world and the United States. The cooperation and working together of the Brotherly Center with New Windsor has always been important and appreciated, and we thank you for your recognition of this for the best.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that, you know, of course, being mayor, I'm going to be a little biased, but I've often thought of all of the work that the Brotherly Service Center has done around the entire world, especially global countries that may not have TV or any kind of news media. New Windsor, in my opinion, because of those efforts, is probably better known or more known than any other town or city in the world. So, especially with disaster relief, portable hospitals, Ed, you spent thirty years there. You know, you can tell a lot about, but I've always been very proud of Brotherly Service Center, and hopefully, we can continue that, and you'll be back in five years, but best wishes to you, and thank you for all that you've done here in New Windsor and around the world.
Thank you. It's such a beautiful town and beautiful location, and we've been privileged to be there.
Thank you.
When you're talking about that, on every single box that goes out, it's the name New Windsor. So it really does, and people come to visit, get to Baltimore and wonder where New Windsor is. And are amazed at what a small town does so much work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, there's one more that... Now, there's one more that, not really any business in town, but I'm going to ask Marion Ware, director of Community Media Center, to come forward. Just to let you know, I was invited to attend the Volly's Award Saturday night that Community Media Center had, I believe, two years ago. Our former town resident, Frank Badavich, received a volley for his Emmy Award-winning crossroads at New Windsor. And Community Media Center is celebrating their twenty-fifth year of service. But the plaque that we got Saturday night, it was two thousand fourteen Municipal Award presented to the town of New Windsor, Mayor Dealbrook, for our best use of media to help promote economic development, community spirit, and citizens who make, making our community a better place to live, work, and play. And I just want to thank you again for that award, and a little token of our appreciation. And some of you may not know some of these facts, because I learned a little bit Saturday night myself. Community Media Center, on their twenty-fifth anniversary, whereas we wish to recognize the Community Media Center for twenty-five years of service to the citizens of Carroll County, and whereas their existence began in a closet in a bank office on Main Street in Westminster, Maryland, and whereas, I didn't know that, whereas in two thousand and three, the Community Media Center, community, yeah, let's start over. Whereas in two thousand and three, the Community Media Center, usually you guys edit that.
Right. No editing.
Come on, we gotta, we gotta edit. Whereas in two thousand and three, the Community Media Center Incorporated has a nonprofit organization to became independent of the county, and whereas in two thousand and four, the Community Media Center took the initiative of a new facility in Washington, Westminster. And whereas the Community Media Center helps citizens and organizations document, inform, educate, and celebrate the life of their local community. And whereas the Community Media Center is recognized nationally as a public education and government station. And whereas the founding Windsor relishes the great partnership of the Community Media Center, and whereas the founding Windsor appreciates the opportunity to get information out to its citizens, and now therefore we, the mayor and council of New Windsor, do commend the Community Media Center for twenty-five years of outstanding service to all citizens of Carroll County, present on Sunday Day, New Windsor, two thousand fourteen.
Absolutely. Well, now you've robbed half of my agenda, but I do have, I really do have to say, you know, as usual, we, we really wanted to do this award because of this town and because specifically of this mayor, because he really does use the resources of the Baris Center for, to benefit you and the local community. So when people talk about grassroots, I really, I am touched by that, but I also really know this is where it kind of blossomed. And it's because this mayor, even in terms of this proclamation, and I'm going to save this on TV, we got a proclamation from the county, and it was mostly about the equipment and, you know, the things that we do. We got a proclamation from the city of Westminster, who actually asked us for a lot of facts, and it was a lovely proclamation. But this proclamation is the best proclamation. Uh-oh. Because it's so personalized and real, and I just want to say thank you for everything you do for your community and for this town. And I have a scarf that I wore tonight that is from Serve from about five or six years ago, that is the most beautiful scarf, and now it's wearing out, so I will definitely be back this year. But I do want to make a plug for them, because Brotherly Center is a wonderful, wonderful place. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for all you and your staff. Counselman Paul Scrugg, do you have anything else to say about the Brotherly Service Center?
I think Loretta and Mary Ann represented things very well, and I appreciate their presence with us this evening.
Community Media Center Presentation Director Marion?
Ware.
Ware, twenty-five years proclamation. Roadway paving?
She's going to speak.
I really was very surprised at that, so. We're just passing out, this is Becky Herrick, she's a member of our board, she's the chair of the Governance Committee, and she's just passing out some materials on the Media Center for this council to refer to, if I can find all my notes. And I also have here with us tonight, the chair of my board, Steve Kirby, he's just going to come up briefly and talk a little bit about the future of CMC. So, to begin, who we are and why we are here. Well, you know, Mayor Rup already went over sort of who we are, and I hope, if you don't know about us, you should, absolutely. And you should also tell other people, because we do a lot of things, and basically, in the end, we end up serving you. And so if you're not, in a sense, taking advantage of us, you really should go on the website and look at what we do. Young people, training, internships, career in tech. Also, I saw on your agenda that you're looking at purchasing a new public address system. I'm not sure if it's for this room or for something else, but it's something else that we do, our technical services. We've had a lot of experience in that. Emergency services in terms of alerts, so that things that are happening in your town, whether it's the sheriff that needs to use us in terms of crawls, we go out both on the web and TV. And the history project, which we're extremely proud of, and I know in New Windsor, Neil mentioned Frank Badavich. Actually, he was coming tonight, but he had a meeting with the New Windsor Heritage Group at tonight's same time. So he is another citizen of your town that actively uses us, both in writing grants for history projects and for producing history about your town through some of the oral histories of your residents. So, that's a little bit of what we do, and you know who I am, and you know I have my board members here. I want to thank you all, both for this lovely, lovely presentation, and for what you do for your community. The reason we are here tonight specifically is because we just want you to be very aware that we are concerned about this new franchise agreement between the county, the municipalities, and the cable company Comcast. So, we are, where we are not specifically sure at this point, we have a fairly good idea that the terms that are now being discussed, and not that they won't or couldn't change, I hope, but the terms that they are discussing currently are things that we, we are afraid might severely impact our ability to provide services. And so we're asked, we're here tonight actually to ask for your political support, and seeing that that is, and in fact, that that does not happen. So, I, I hope that you will ask questions, if there are things that you don't understand about channel twenty-three. But I think if I have to summarize all of the many aspects of this franchise, I would say basically that in two thousand, fourteen years ago, a new franchise was written, and all the municipalities wanted a channel for their own local community. And actually, the company at that time, which was Prestige many years ago, small local cable company, agreed to do that. And so, most of the municipalities that were then actively engaged, Manchester being one, they had another separate channel through Pennsylvania, so they even had a separate cable company. But all of the municipalities thought they were going to have their own channel. In the end, after a couple of years of back and forth, it was decided that it was too expensive for the cable company to provide that, and there were some question about the technical difficulties. So instead, they decided that we would have one channel, and that all the municipalities would share it. Now, I don't think, actually, in a lot of ways, that that wasn't the best decision. But it now appears that we are not sure whether we will have the funding. We are an agent of that channel. So in effect, the peg portion of the agreement, public education and government, simply allows you, in a sense, by using the franchise fees and that agreement, to pay us in order to provide content, train, do all of the services that we provide. So in effect, I, I want to make very clear, it's your channel. It is your channel. An eighth. And I also have to say, if you look at this fiscal report in terms, because we do, in a sense, measure what it would cost you to have these kinds of services if we did not provide them. Now, we give a big discount, but what you pay in terms of franchise fees versus what you get, because you have a very active mayor and you use the services, is about half. In fact, it's even less. So, you are paying through the franchise fees, and basically this, in a sense, subsidized, although I want to say it is not subsidized in the sense of taxes, it's actually cable, meaning the cable company is paying you and the county a rent for the public right-of-ways. So they use the public right-of-ways, and they then end up paying you for the use of those. And you, in turn, are passing that on to the citizens of your local towns. So that's basically how that works. So, at this point, all we want you to do is to find out more, ask questions. If you want to come talk to me or talk, talk to Neil, then that would be appropriate. We're going to give some more presentations to all of the municipalities and to the mayors, and we will be back to ask that hopefully you support us in terms of signing this franchise. You will sign the franchise at some point, hopefully. It's been four years now that it's being negotiated, so I see Mayor Rup is laughing.
I don't know how many, I don't know how many extensions we've approved.
Well, and you know, actually, I heard from somebody, it was Arlington, and they said, well, our extensions, because Comcast definitely does have a certain strategy, their extensions are a year. I said, oh, ours are every three months for four years. So I think, I think it's up in, in February again.
I think.
So, are there any questions? Any questions from the young people? This is terrific, I have to say, it really is, to watch them. No? Okay. Last chance. Steve.
Good evening, and thank you for the time in front of you. I just, just want to reemphasize what Marion said, that we're asking for your political support in opposing the peg portion of the franchise agreement. We weren't a part of the agreement, we don't know anything about it. What we know about it is, is, is not good, but we've seen nothing, and we weren't a part of the negotiations, we weren't in the room, and that's not the way the franchise agreement went years ago. It's, for us, it's about planning and maintaining services, and we don't know what to do, it's hard to plan. We get it, the universe is changing. Comcast is, is, is changing, broadcast channels, people are watching TV differently, there's municipal broadband, there's, there's TV over IP, video over IP. We understand that the universe is changing, but we want to be in the conversation, we want to be in the negotiations, in order to help plan ourselves, in order to continue being Carroll Media Center, and we're asking for your political support in opposing, not rubber stamping, an agreement that we weren't a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Roadway paving assessment report. Councilman Hoffman. New Windsor entered a contract with AMEC to perform a pavement service condition evolution and site review of the town's roads. This includes deflection testing and paving pouring. From this information, AMEC in state, estimated the pavement condition index PCI, and formulated a repair recommendation for each road. Estimated traffic requirements were then factored in, and the result was a prioritized five-year repair plan, including the estimated cost to repair each road for budgeting purposes. Estimated cost totaled to one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, which covers approximately six point four miles of surf, of road surface. One year is the most costly at seven hundred, seven hundred fifty, or seven hundred five thousand four hundred dollars. However, the town has applied for a rural legacy grant of two hundred sixty-two thousand, which was intended to be used to repair Hillside, Lambert, Blue Ridge, and College Avenue. All these roads are listed in one year, in the one-year prioritization. If the grant is received, remaining balance for the repairs for the first year would be four hundred forty-three thousand four hundred. AMEC has provided the town through a analysis?
Thorough.
Oh. AMEC has provided the town a thorough analysis of the condition of our roads, and a prioritized plan to repair them with estimated costs, help us, help us in our budgeting process. Having this evolution completed was necessary and physically prudent, as it provided an essential tool to aid in our planning process.
Thank you. Any questions?
So, our projects are one point five million?
The total cost was approximately one point five million to do the six point four miles of road surface in the town. That could vary depending on, there was three different types of road server, recommendation, recommendations that we could choose. So depending on exactly how we repaired the road?
Whether it's reclaimed or new, or whatever.
Correct.
Where are we at in the grant process? How far?
Should know, anytime I've asked, this past week and even today, to get some updates, and they said originally, November, middle of November, they should know, said we should know about the grant. It was two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars grant for four streets.
Right. And all four of those streets were in the year-one prioritization, was the, the longest list of roads to be done, was the first year, hence the, you know, almost three-quarters of a million dollars for that first year.
The first year was three-quarters, we're hoping to get two hundred sixty thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Which will get us started. This has been a two or three-year process of cataloging all of our roads, all of our streets, what kind of condition they're in, the width, the length, and the estimated cost, so that we can get into a, hopefully, a regular annual maintenance of our roads. It'll probably never end, once we, we get all the roads done, and the first ones will need to be redone, but this is a big start.
Very good start.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the full report is in your binders behind tab eight. This is with the other report, I suggest you pull that and take that with you, because we've been talking. we've been talking about making folks aware of these costs, so we're going to be discussing this again in our next work session, most likely. So, you want to take that with you, so you'll be familiar with it that night.
Thank you.
Waste water pumping station project. Councilman Housegrove.
As the mayor and councilor are aware, the town is very close to the beginning of a project that will replace our two oldest waste water pump stations. One station is located at the foot of Main Street, near Water Street, and the other is on Co-Drive off of High Street, near the railroad tracks. The existing pump stations were built in 1965 in conjunction with the installation of New Windsor's sewer system, and has served us well for almost 50 years. But as you can imagine, the time has come in which replacement is necessary. The expense of maintenance and repair of the old pump stations cost over 50,000 last year alone. The total project is 920,000, and is being financed through a USDA Rural Utility Service loan. Our engineering firm is AROO of Hagerstown, Maryland, and the contractor is M2 Construction of Lansville, Pennsylvania. The precedent timeline has us on track to issue a notice to proceed on December 8th, and construction is expected to be completed in 240 days, which is the first week of August 2015. The new pump stations will have several features that are significant improvements over the current stations. They each will have a 2,000-gallon well, wet well, or holding capacity, dual pumps, so that if one fails, the other will take over, high-water alarms that will alert appropriate staff in the event of failure, and above-ground motors and pumps for ease of service and maintenance, as opposed to the current in-ground confined space chambers. It is important to note that the cost for this project is already included in current base sewer charge that New Windsor's residents are assessed, and equates to approximately $52 per year, or $13 per quarter. There will be no increase to the sewer charges as a result for this project. We need to thank Jack Cough for assessing the need and encouraging us to move forward this project, and manager Frank Schaefer for the many hours involved in various applications, meetings, plans, and all that is involved in this project of this scope.
Thank you. Greater New Windsor Committee Streetscape Partnership. Councilman Noel.
I'm going to give Preston a break on this one.
Okay.
Because it's a little difficult to explain. The Greater New Windsor Committee was created probably 15 years ago to work in the community. We've done a number of community projects, with Main Street starting. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, the committee has the ability to take donations from individuals, give them the tax benefit, and pass it on to the town. And we just heard that the water and sewer for Main Street is going to be 1.3 million dollars, has to come from somewhere. If, for example, we decide we want to do...
Streetlights.
Streetlights. You know, the standard streetlight may be just a pole, we want something a little fancier, you know, maybe it's another $5,000 a pole. The Greater New Windsor Committee will have the ability to go to the state and apply for tax credits that we can sell to individuals and corporations at a 50% discount. So, that's how we collect money. We sell the tax credit to the business, the business gets to take 50% of that as their tax, plus they also get to take the donation, as a taxable donation. So, they make money, we make money, and the town gets money. So, we're going to be starting that, once the New Windsor Main Street project gets further along, and we have some better idea of what the fees are going to, the costs are going to be, then we can start marketing this a little better. But I think it's going to be a win-win situation, and gives some corporate sponsors the opportunity to make some donations, it's going to benefit them, as well as the town and then individuals also.
And Attorney Kane, you'll be working on an agreement in the future? Thank you.
Don't say yes when they're going to ask you.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we getting charged double tonight?
Wait a minute, what were you supposed to say? Oh, no. You were supposed to say volunteer tonight, donating your services.
And she is.
Small Business Saturday. Councilwoman Schultz.
We would like the residents to consider visiting some of the small businesses and shops in New Windsor on Small Business Saturday, November 2nd. Uncle Matty's, Sir Heritage Community Shop, Melissa Mills, Monstaro.
And I'm just going to add to what Councilwoman Prentice is saying, because a lot of people are not even aware that we have two nice little shops right here in New Windsor. In fact, I asked Councilwoman Prentice if she had ever been to the Sir Shop, and she had not, so I encouraged her to pick up a catalog. So, if you all, Christmas is coming, the holidays are coming, it's a great place to get wonderful gifts, and I don't know how many of you know about the New Windsor Museum, which is right on Main Street next to the bank. It also has a gift shop, has a lot of things that are specifically targeting the history of New Windsor books, Christmas ornaments, pottery, and other items. So, you know, when you're thinking about that hard-to-shop for a person, you can stick right here in town, and you can buy gift certificates at all of our local restaurants. So, that's what the Small Business Saturday is about. And of course, we're hoping to develop the dealman-in and have additional businesses, but it's the people who live in the community that need to start that support, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Purchase a public address system. Councilman Smith.
In conjunction with the tree lighting, I would like for the council to consider purchasing a mobile public announcement system to be used at all town functions needing voice amplification. This had been discussed with my predecessor and prior councilmember Noel. There are currently several PA systems available at a musical supply store. The two options that work best are very similar in style and reliability. However, one has a few more features and better amplification. I would like to be able to have the purchase approved, so we'll be able for the tree lighting. They range in price from $299 to $399. However, due to the upcoming holiday season, there are sales and discounts available. So, what I am asking is to approve no more than $400 plus tax for this purchase.
Ask Ms. Alvin if we have that in our funds.
Make a motion.
Ms. Alvin, do we have that in our funds?
Yes, we'll find it.
Do you like to make a motion to approve to purchase a PA system? Just say it.
Motion to purchase a PA system.
Not to exceed $400.
Not to exceed $400.
Second.
That was the easiest thing I've ever gotten passed, ever.
That's because it wasn't you.
Wow. I'm assuming...
We have a motion and a second to purchase a PA system not to exceed $400.
All those in favor, say aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Motion carry.
Motion carry.
See how easy it is to spend $400?
Oh, say no.
Maybe we can fund our roads tonight, too.
The motion's easy, Clark.
Under new business, the 60-inch hydrant markers.
Under new business, the 60-inch hydrant markers.
At 1,000.
At 1,000.
$845.
$845.
What's the council think? How's the council feel?
How does the council feel?
Do we have the funds somewhere for that?
Just speak up.
Yes.
We have 10,000 in the budget.
Under equipment and maintenance.
Okay. It's Utilities Enterprise Fund.
Yes, Utilities Enterprise Fund.
Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase of...
The ones make motion?
Do I hear a motion to approve the 60-inch hydrant markers? So moved.
Wow. Just say so moved. Just say so moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
That's good, that's good.
A motion and a second.
We have a motion and second to approve the 60-inch hydrant markers.
For $1,845.
For $1,845. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carry.
Tell Chief Cough, he'll order the markers.
Chief Cough, you can order the markers.
Probably the easiest the fire department's ever gotten anything to.
Announcements. Does the council have any announcements?
I do. The Holiday Homes and Historic Properties Tour will be Sunday, December 7, 2014, from 1:30 to 5:30 PM. Tours begin at the New Windsor Museum, 207 Main Street. Ticket sales at the New Windsor Museum, most Saturdays, 10 to 1, or at the New Windsor State Bank branches, or on the day of the tour at the New Windsor Museum. Adults, $15; children and students, $5. Little note here, highlight of the tour is the Springdale Schoolhouse, where middle school students will conduct studies as were done in the 1800s. Another highlight is Springdale Log House, never before opened before a tour. So, support the New Windsor Heritage Committee. Also, I think the shadows deserve a big round of applause, I think they've done an outstanding job. Let's see my list here again. Councilman Nolan, you have any comments about tonight's meeting? No?
It was a good experience.
Good. Councilwoman Andrews? Nope. Councilman Jones? You had fun? Good. Councilwoman Hughes?
It was very interesting. I enjoyed myself.
Good. Councilwoman Prentice?
I enjoyed it, thank you.
Good. And Attorney Kane?
This was a lot of fun, I was glad that I did this.
Good. And Mayor Sawyers?
This was fun, thanks for having us.
Well, we greatly appreciate you participating, and again, you're a teacher. We greatly thank Jennifer Moran for your support again, and hopefully, we do something, I don't know whether we'll be doing this again next year, but if you have ideas to get us involved and have another partnership activity, we'd be more than happy to entertain those thoughts. Also, I didn't get, Councilman, I believe Noel was the one that suggested we get you T-shirts or some kind of shirts for tonight, however, I didn't get the sizes, that was not anybody's fault or anything, we just didn't think about it in time to get the shirts printed, but we will get shirts printed for all of you, and we'll probably make a presentation at maybe a middle school assembly or something, so, in front of your peers. So, you know, who knows? These guys did an outstanding job, very proud of them. Must be a lot going on at school and also home, with the parent support, and the teachers doing an excellent job at New Windsor Middle School. And these very possibly could be your future elected officials, your leaders in the near future. So, again, thank you for everything, and council and attorney, thank you for your support in doing this, greatly appreciate it. They, I might have them back instead of you guys.
And they were responsible, they were responsible for spending over $2,000 of taxpayers' money, so I will be mentioning that to anybody.
Any other comments? Again, the house tour, the historic, or the Holiday Homes and Historic Properties Tour, Sunday, December 7. Pancake Breakfast is also December 7, from 7 to 11, down on Social Hall, the Windsor Station at the Far Hall. Come out and socialize, it's a great opportunity to sit down with family, friends, and sit and get a good meal, and just relax a little bit. And I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and...
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Say so moved. So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Got a second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.
Good job. Sure. Everybody? Yep. Can everybody get in front of the sign?